Students from Plimell Elementary School to lead us in the lunch tonight. Okay. All right, welcome.
Let's lean into the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
So tell us about yourself. Why did you get to come to our meeting tonight?
I was concerned.
You're in StuCo, okay. And did you get elected for that position? Or did you have to... Yeah, you did. Okay. Well, can we take our picture with you now, please?
Okay, ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
And if you guys want to go through the line and shake your hand and we'll give you pins. Thank you for coming tonight.
Hi, how are you? Good. Thanks for coming tonight.
Watch for speeding tickets, okay?
Okay. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Madam President, I move that we approve the agenda with the following amendments. Number one, additional certified personnel actions for consideration, item E3, and reluctantly adding item number J, consideration of an adoption of a resolution to FLL USD 457 for education. Any good a second?
Second.
Okay, do you need to have a second? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to delegations, Q and A, public comment, and I believe we have somebody here to speak with us tonight. Lucy. Oh, there you are, Lucy. Come on up. Okay, perfect.
So I've never done this before. Like, where would you like me to stand?
Just voting now for you.
Okay.
Lucy, we usually...
Sure. Think of like ninety seconds. It's gonna be short, guys, absolutely. My name is Lucy Crotz and I have a freshman boy swimmer at the high school. I've called several of the board members to talk about my concern. We have several parents here. I want to keep it super short, but because we had made a phone call to some of the board members, I wanted to follow up with just a quick discussion. We are dealing with an issue with the boys swim team, that the YMCA swimming pool, the temperature is fluctuating a lot, and while this is just not super safe for our kids to be swimming in super hot or super cold temperatures. So I just wanted to kind of put this on the USD 457 radar as something to think about for a long-term solution of maybe a community swimming pool that USD 457 could partner with. So while this is nothing that's going to be solved tonight or this year, start thinking long-term of how we can make this better situation for our kids, please. And kind of, you know, I know you guys have like different projects that are like number one and two, and we're just asking to kind of be thought of in like maybe the next top five things that you guys start thinking about. So we would love to have... When we get more organized, we will probably come and have an actual presentation for the board, but I just wanted to come and say, hey, we have some concerns with how things are going and would love to... We hope that the board will work with us and the YMCA or another community partner to make this a better facility for our kids. So is that... Any questions or anything? Okay, perfect. Great. Thank you.
I really appreciate you wanting to speak with the board, Lucy, and I know all the board's probably been approached in different things. And I appreciate any time that parents have a concern or issue. That's what we work for you all too. So thank you for reaching out to us as board members. I know the administration has also heard your voices and our meeting, and we'll keep the board informed of how we're going to proceed and go from here. But it's always important for the whole community to work together when we have issues. So hopefully we can do that and continue to make not only the district, but our community a great place. So thank you, please. Okay, with that, we'll have our building presentation from Garden City Alternate Education Center.
Okay, we're gonna take just a little bit of time today to kind of share with you during our building presentation what we titled "All Things New." This is... It's been two years since we've done this, and we have a lot of new staff, a lot of new students. Student population is double and then some in the past two years. New staff, new rooms, and new student opportunities that my two StuCo members and one of our new teachers will be available for questions afterwards. First slide there is new staff. In the TEP side of our building, Sabrina Rishel is the kindergarten through second grade. We call it the littles room in the TEP. And Thomas Shields is our middles teacher, grades three through six. Alternative High School, Brandy West is our new certified science teacher. The building has not had a certified science teacher for the past six years, and we were able to share with Brandy what direction we were moving in, and she jumped on board. And then our new high school math teacher is Ms. Fitz, sitting down there. And you'll see her in some pictures coming up in our student opportunities. Came to us from Cheyenne, Wyoming, used to teach at an alternative high school there. I think quickly becoming a student favorite. You could probably ask the girls about that. I think they would agree with me. Building-wide, we have a new secretary, Claudia Rivera, and a new CSOP, Lorena Lopez, that help in the office. If you come to our building, they are the faces that you see first. You know, I tell them all the time, I might be the name linked to the building, but they're the faces that are linked to the building because they are our first line of welcoming to the community, and they both do a fantastic job there. Building-wide, certified Lisa Jewell does our day school in our transition room. Lindy Stokes is a district behavior specialist that she's in, housed in our building. Mrs. Youngman, who was going to be here this evening but went home ill, like a good majority of kids in our district and staff. And then, of course, I am in my second year here, so this is my first building presentation. New rooms and change that we've seen in our building. The day school and transition room pod, it's a whole little section of our building that's developing almost daily, working directly with the special education department on those things. We have an art teacher now. We have an art room dedicated to her. And with that, our conference room went from 210 to room 100, and because of another change, now it's in room 109. So we've kept moving things around, and our district staff has been fantastic in that. And then our high school science lab, which is an awesome addition, thanks to those of you that sit up here. And my first picture slide shows basically the progression of that science lab. It started with table frame or chair... Table frames and the drywall pre and post, and then the counters. And then the middle picture, Mrs. West and her students using the science lab the first day that it was available for use. And they're in there, I think, probably each class probably two times a week. You know, they're in there accessing the space and accessing... You'll see the gas knobs on the tables there. There's outlets underneath, so you know, it is a full-functioning science lab. And I think the kids enjoy it, and I know Mrs. West enjoys it. She thanks me multiple times and tells me to tell anyone that can. And to discuss our student opportunities, I'm gonna turn it over to two StuCo members of ours. This is Brooklyn Smith and Tiana Fryderen.
Hello. Some of the new opportunities that we've gotten were like going out and exploring here at the Garden City College. And we go and do some visits, like exploration day and cosmetology tour, where we went in and got like some of our nails done, our hair did, with some of the girls that were there. And then the fast food lab. Some people are gonna come over and help us fill out a fast food form so that we could go... So the government can help us with some of our student loans and stuff. Our student... Yeah, college stuff. And our enrollment dates during the second semester. And then these are some of the pictures of us going to the BSIC and to the college and stuff. Yeah, and then the... Some speakers coming to us and talking.
Some other college... Or some other events that we got to participate in was the college and career planning conference. And we had got... This was at the Garden City High School, and we had got opportunities to talk to different like principals or whatever, administrators of different colleges around like from Hays, from Case State. It was really cool. We got to see the different requirements they had to go into school and GPAs and all that. I thought that was a really cool experience we got to participate in. And we had a college application workshop. We participated in scholarship applications, and we were shown how to look at scholarships that we could be... Um...
Eligible for...
Yeah, eligible for. And we had parent-student graduation conferences with the counselor. And everybody attended those, parents attended, and I thought it was a cool way for our parents to understand what track we were on and how we were gonna get there. And we found ways to help in our school and community by doing a food drive, which turned out pretty good for the amount of people we have in our school. And the students led tables for at BSIC stem night. I did not attend, but I heard that was pretty good, too. And there was some marketing stuff there.
We also had some college people come in and talk to us more like hands-on... Not hands-on, but like came out and talked to us more about what their colleges were about. And some... A lady from the YO... YOU Tech came and talked about her... Their technical programs and stuff, about cars and all of that. And then we're gonna raise some money to go to Colby and have a tour there and just see what that's about. And then our ASVAB texting. And then our adulting day. Yeah.
We are having our ACT and work keys testing in February. All 11th grade students and graduating students this year will be participating in that. We had an individual plan of study, including Zello, which was career cruising, and it helped us see what our interests led to in careers, potential careers for us. And we'll have student-led parent conferences again in February to review our progress and our graduation dates. And our lunch and learns, which included our Western State Bank, which was in October for Ms. Fitz's financial class, which was really cool. We got to learn a lot of different things about taxes, and we honestly learned a lot in her financial math class. That was really nice. And the Pedro plumbing and our automotive and collision repair. Those are some of the opportunities that we got to participate in this year.
And that's pretty much what we've been up to the last year and a half, been on into the rest of the spring.
And even though I'm graduating this year, I'm honestly really excited to see what you guys are gonna do. Here, complete.
Does the board have any questions for anyone?
So I saw one of the activities was adulting day. What did that consist of?
Actually, they haven't had it yet.
Oh, okay, it's coming up.
It's coming up towards the end... Towards third or fourth quarter, at the end of the third quarter. We're gonna do it the Friday before spring break. And Mrs. Youngman has written a grant, our school counselor has written a grant, to partner with multiple agencies within the community. And it's gonna be a lot of those life skill things. There's probably gonna be some tax prep type information, how to change a tire, different things along those lines. Just the... She met with a group that she's a part of, and it was like, you know, five years from now, what skills are you gonna wanna have that you don't currently have? And then she's working to address those different kinds of things. Basic automotive care. There's going to be a food and nutrition kind of thing, a healthy snacks, kind of a cooking demonstration, just a long line of things. But they will... Students will break off into four groups, and they will break up two required and then two that they get to pick. And Mrs. Youngman, that's her second quarter, second semester project, and we're hoping it becomes a yearly thing. And the outgoing seniors, the graduating seniors, there's actually a adulting 101 book that we will use some of our building funds to purchase as a gift for all graduating seniors. And so over time, every student in our building will get that. We'll get that book given to them.
And how did you realize to get voted for StuCo, or did you just have to run for it?
We volunteered for it.
Volunteer. Hey, that's great. So you were really excited to come do some public speaking.
A little nervous.
Sure. And how many students are currently at the Alternative Center?
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one, and you had a hundred percent attendance for your conferences with that many students?
The graduating...
The graduating...
Yep, the students that were set to graduate, we had a hundred percent attendance for them and their parents to meet with our school counselor and talk about their plans after high school and their career, college path, you know, where they're going, what they wanted to study, and how they wanted to get there, their definition of success.
Fantastic. Well, I know I've been in your building a couple of times, and when I do go into that front office, it's always very positive. And it's really nice to walk into that building, so I think you've done a great job over there. Thank you, ladies and teachers, and thank you for coming and presenting tonight. We'll cheer on your success post-graduation. Thanks. Oh, you wanna come through the line? You can shake your hand and do it. Sure. What is your best name?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm gonna go in the line. Oh, good! Yay!
Thanks for being here. Congratulations for the graduation. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thanks for being here. Appreciate it.
Okay, we'll move on to correspondence. Are you ready for correspondence tonight? And the consent agenda. Madam President, I move that we approve the consent agenda as previously amended. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Mark?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, great. Then we move on to the curriculum course, social-emotional growth curriculum adoption.
Okay, so last year, we started the curriculum. One of the mandates from the Kansas State Board of Education is that social-emotional factors measured locally. And so I chaired a committee last year that looked at different pieces of data that we would use to do that. And so through that process, we identified the three pieces that we would use being savers, the Communities That Care survey, and student discipline data. And after that, it kind of progressed into looking at social-emotional curriculums for the upcoming year. And so we kind of had the committee that already put together, and so there were some people that left and some people that were headed on. And so we had a pretty good group of folks, teachers, school counselors, administrators, and then myself. And we began looking at different curriculums. And so these ladies were awesome enough to be a part of the committee, and I'm gonna let them kind of take over from here and kind of share what the tasks of the committee were and the results that we found and kind of what our recommendations are moving forward, so.
So the first slide pretty much tells us what we did is we came together for our meetings. We looked at various different curriculums and we reviewed them. We broke them apart and scored them by rubrics according to how they were relevant to our standards and relevant for what we needed in our culture and our district. We surveyed the staff, asking them which ones that they would prefer, what would work better for them. And then we reviewed the data from that. We also had an opportunity to listen to some of the representatives from the different curriculum, which helped us kind of pick which ones to present. And then we make a... Made a recommendation to the curriculum council. Please stop all those things.
So after we went through all the rubrics and we looked at these five different curriculum, and as you can see, the Minds Up curriculum scored the highest at ninety-four percent. And it is... It's a wonderful curriculum from Scholastic that has brain research and hands-on activities and things. But when we contacted them about their professional development and coming out to this area, they said no to now and in the future. It just wasn't on their radar of being in this area to train our teachers and our staff. So unfortunately, that kind of got rid of that curriculum for us because we wouldn't have the professional development for our staff. Two of them, the life skills and the PBIS, scored lower on our rubrics. And so that left us with Second Step in the CCC framework, with both scored eighty-six percent off of our rubrics that we went through.
To get more input from our school personnel and those that would actually be implementing it with our students, we wanted to send out a survey that was more specific to the curriculums that we were looking at. So we put together a survey, which we'll go through those responses with you and what our staff kind of supported and how that led to our decision. But we let that... Or we sent this out to all K through twelve certified staff, and from those staff, we received two hundred and seven responses. So one of the questions we asked is what grade level they were teaching. Not only, which I'll go further into the questions that we asked, but not only did we want to know the building that they were in, but our curriculums are gonna differ based on the developmental level and the grade level that our students are in. So we wanted to see the breakdown of their grade. So you can kind of see there. We also asked... We understand that several people work within multiple buildings, so we wanted to know what buildings are being addressed. You know, we had the Alternative High School on there. So we just wanted to know where our responses are coming from. And then we could also have linked those out with our survey to see how those particular grade levels in buildings were responding. And then finally, we asked them what their position is. So with this curriculum adoption, you know, we expect this to be a universal implementation across our entire building, so we don't want that only coming from our general education teachers, but from our electives and our special education teachers and our administrators. We want it to be a common knowledge, a common language, so it was important for us all to be on the same page.
When choosing the curriculum, we asked the question... This particular question in order to determine how familiar our colleagues are with social-emotional standards, as the standards are going to be the backbone to why we chose the curriculum we chose.
We also asked our colleagues which type of curriculum they would rather have. So would they rather have something that's scripted and relatively prepared and ready for us with limited teacher modifications? Or would they rather have something that would definitely require more planning, but that would give us a little bit more freedom in our classrooms to do what we wanted? From this, you can tell that overwhelmingly, our teachers asked for something that was more scripted and a little bit more planned and put together.
We also wanted to find out how important our colleagues felt teaching the social-emotional standards in the classroom was. And as you can tell with this particular slide, many of our colleagues are understanding that this is something that we definitely need to get into our general classrooms.
We also asked them about how much time per week they were willing to put into planning and getting things together for every lesson. And after a lot of time and consideration, the committee was able to see that the two curricula that we're really talking about, Second Step and the CCC framework, would hopefully, or they will, fall into this kind of range of the thirty minutes or less kind of planning, which is what all of our colleagues said that they were... Or most of our colleagues said that they were really looking for.
We as a committee... It was also important to this committee that we determined how the district staff felt about being trained. And from this data, you can see that training was really high on our colleagues' minds, and really, they wanted that extra support. And we're hoping also that as a committee, as we are having these conversations, that through that more training, we would be able to kind of lessen that planned time during the school year as well. Here, we asked which choice held the most importance to them. And as you can see here, the majority of our colleagues seemed that two curriculums that encompassed the K6 and then 712 is kind of what they were seeking. And so with our top two choices, CCC framework being that that would encompass our seven through twelve, and actually, after discussing, I believe we're gonna move it in some grades to six through twelve. And then the Second Step being our second one would encompass the K through five level. We also asked this particular question in order to determine the future layout of other questions because the CCC framework is laid out to thirty or minute... Thirty minutes or less planning for grade levels six through twelve. However, it would have taken a lot more plan for K-five teachers, and so that was the reason behind this question. And understanding with the selection of a K-12 curriculum, we were just asking how comfortable they were. Even though our colleagues are comfortable with putting the time in, we go back to the earlier question to where they would still like to keep that to thirty minutes or less. So that helped us determine in the final recommendation of our two curriculas.
So as a committee, we were hoping that for Second Step will be K through four, and then the buildings that go K through six, so Ginny Barker, Plimell, and AP Bert, we would like Second Step for the whole building so that they can all be using the same vocabulary, the same setup, the same layout for the entire building. the same setup, the same layout for the entire building. And then the CCC framework would be in the intermediate centers, the middle schools, and the high schools.
This slide right here just tells you the cost for each curriculum. The numbers that are here are just on the high end. There's other factors that are taken into consideration. So odds are, this is probably not going to be as much as there, but we went with the high end quotes, so you would have a good idea of what it could possibly be.
You have questions for us? I would say the CCC framework, the nice thing about that is the curriculum actually is completely and totally free. Well, actually, I think it's $50. We have to pay for a PDF that they give us. They give us the digital copy of the curriculum. The majority of that cost for that program is professional development. And so, that curriculum comes out of KU, and so the staff would come out and they would meet with, meet with the buildings individually they would like to have. And that's where I think we're going to see a difference in cost probably because the amount of days that they want to meet with us versus the amount of days that we have for in-service on the calendar are probably not going to, probably not going to allow that many days. But that was kind of the figure that she gave us. And so, we're kind of going on the high end. And once we get kind of the, obviously, approval from you guys, but after that, when we get a clear picture of what the calendar's going to look like next year, we can have a more detailed outline of what professional development plan would be moving forward.
How many days do they suggest?
Four days per building. And so, and she said that we could, depending on the CCC, and I'm going to lead to you a little bit, Denika, because I know you're more familiar with it, but the CCC framework, the kids will pick one competency that they, that they really want to, or not the kids, the staff will pick one competency that they want to work on with the kids. And so, the training would go into how to make them like self-efficacy or, you know, whatever, whatever they pick. And so, the training would be like an all-building training, and then they would come back later and do like individual coaching through PLCs, things like that, where they would spend a day in the building a couple times throughout the year to do some follow-up with smaller groups.
And sometimes, year to year, you stay on the same competency. So if you spill, if you pick self-efficacy and then you feel like after year one, your kiddos and/or the staff still feel like we need to focus on that one again, then that's when it comes down to that.
How do they work that training from KU? Do they just give you a certain number of hours, a certain number of days?
Days.
Days.
Yeah, $1,500 a day per.
Those days can be chosen over multiple years? Are they?
They're recommending four, they would like to do pretty heavy in the first year, and then the second year, we could, we would go lighter, but they would like to try to do four days. And like I said, I don't know how realistic that is with our, with our PD schedule, but and she said that they're flexible. Once we kind of have a clear picture of what we're doing, we can.
The cost included? All of the days that they want to do?
Yeah, so that would be four days for each of the six schools.
And that's the curriculum that is fully developed, seven 12?
Six 12.
Or six 12, sorry, yeah. So that's, that curriculum's fully developed. It was not developed K five. And so that was the question we asked to our colleagues is, they are willing to put the time, but they would prefer to have something that was, at least at this time, more scripted.
Because we would have to create that, and we'd have to create that from scratch with the support of, of the professional development.
And you anticipate implementing an upgrade at the same time? The curriculum?
Yeah, yeah. So like Second Step that we, and we're recommending Second Step, and the reason we kind of went and made the break that we did is thinking long-term, you know, depending on what happens with, with the, the grade levels, you know, the reconfiguration that we're looking at. Second Step would be really easy to go K five and then do six 12 with the CCC framework. And so, so we did that. There would be different professional development with the Second Step. And that would just be basically a one day at the front that we would get for, for the elementary folks. And then a lot of their PD is like online modules and things like that that they would do like during PLCs and things like that, where they would have their follow-up professional development, so.
And you're hoping to implement this when?
Best-case scenario would be in August. Depending on, like I said, there's, there's still a lot of variables out there with the PD calendar, with the, the school calendar and things like that, so.
It'd be ready by August.
In theory, that would be great. What they would like to do is if we can, if we can make an agreement with them, they would actually like to come out, I think, and meet with administrators in like April and kind of get, what competency do you want to work on? What are you thinking as far as that goes? And then we can kind of get that plan together so that we can kind of get that organized over the summer would be what they're recommending with the CCC framework. And then, like I said, with Second Step, I think that would be a lot easier to organize because most of that stuff is already put together. We're only talking about one day versus four for the other program.
Do you guys mind introducing yourselves?
I should have done that, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I should have done it from the very start, I didn't want to interrupt. Can you just let us know? I know I've, we've all, you've done presentations and we've probably worked with you, but just so we can.
I'm Kristin Tone, school psychologist.
I'm Jennifer Armstrong, I'm the school counselor at Florence Wilson.
Brittany Pergar, seventh grade English teacher at Kenneth Henderson.
Denika Kitch, behavior classroom teacher for SPED, K four, Georgia Matthews.
Kim Freeland, I'm the PE teacher at AP Huber Elementary.
Amy Hollings, we're the principal at Richard Walker.
And thanks for all the time and work that you've put into this. I think this is really exciting and definitely necessary for our district and our schools. Are we taking action tonight?
If you were, if you're comfortable doing that, discuss then through the curriculum council and through our normal curriculum adoption, all of our chance and balances. If you'd rather wait until next time, we can, we can put it off until the next meeting, bring it back, it's not finished, business item, or if you're ready to take action, it just will allow them to get into an agreement, I get into a, a, if you take action now, either way.
Or are you comfortable taking action tonight? Mark, are you comfortable taking action tonight?
Yes, I am.
Okay, then let's go ahead and vote. For to pass the social emotional curriculum that has been presented tonight? Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay?
Awesome, thank you.
And hopefully, we'll get there.
Next steps, next steps.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Thank you for the work on it. Okay, so we'll move on to the special ed department.
You guys are stuck with me again, sorry.
We need to guess.
Come over here, Vanny, you can, you can push my buttons for me. So, we have some new faces in the SPED department. Obviously, this is my first year as the Director of Special Education. It has definitely been an exciting year, and I've learned a ton already. Tracy Schellenberger is our lone veteran in the department, so she's our secondary coordinator. And then Tammy Moore is our elementary TOSA, and so she handles all of our K four buildings. And then Mel is our early childhood TOSA, so she does all the work with Garfield and then all the transitions for the kiddos that we get between our CDC two to us, so. Just some, some, some numbers, some data to share with you all. Currently, we have, as of December 1st, we have 1,250 IMPs in our school district, 214 at the high school, 14 at the Alternative Center, we have 143 at the middle schools, 129 at the intermediate centers, 520 at our elementary schools, we have 197 at Garfield right now, we have two kiddos on homebound, we serve 22 kids at the Catholic schools. And then this year, our Brockbuster Coffee Shop, we, we have seven kiddos that are working there. And at the time we did the slide, we had two kiddos at the JDC. I don't think we have any right now, do we, Trace? So they kind of come and go pretty quickly. So that number changes on a pretty frequent basis. So some of the classroom services that we provide, we have CWC, which is class within a class, that's where the SPED teacher goes into the classroom, and the child's in the general classroom, and they offer support in that classroom. Resource pullout would be where we take the child out of, out of that classroom to work with them in a small group or individually more intensively. We have our resource self-contained, and so that would be classrooms for kiddos that are functioning below average cognitively. And so that curriculum is usually modified to meet their needs. We have our life skills self-contained classrooms where there is an academic focus there, but a lot of it is on, primarily on functional skills to make them as independent as we can. And then our functional classrooms are even more focused on the life skills and independence. We serve kiddos at the virtual school. We have the transition room, so a lot of the times, we'll have kids that'll enroll. Today, I think I was in the enrollment office four different times for kiddos that showed up on IEPs that are, that are going to be new students to the district. And a lot of the times, we don't have all the information on that kiddo yet, and so we'll put them in the transition room until we can kind of get a better picture of what their needs are going to be before we, before we make a determination on what their placement will be. The TDP, obviously, for our kiddos that need more of that social, or that, well, social, emotional, and mental health aspect, they're able to get the therapy services that they need there. And then, one of the new classrooms that we started this year is the day school, which is at JD, at, at the Alternative Center, and Mr. Phelps talked about it a little bit. And that is for our kiddos who have more needs. We've got, we've got some kiddos there that, pretty significant autism, things like that. And so, a much smaller setting, and it allows, with, with more adults and more services to give them the support that they need to be successful. And so far, that has been a really good program from what we've seen so far. I've been really pleased with, with where we are with that. And then, of course, our Brockbuster Coffee Shop for 18 to 21-year-olds, I think that's been a really positive experience for our kiddos so that they're, when they turn 18 and they go to the college, they're actually on a campus with kids that are their age. They're, they're going to be what they're typically developing, peers that are their age. And so that's been a really positive experience for them as well. Some of the related services, we have six school psychologist centers in our district right now. One of them's out on medical leave, so we have five, five folks that are hustling, and they're doing a great job trying to stay caught up. We have nine speech pathologists, eight of them are employed here in the district, and then we have one that we do teletherapy with because we just weren't able to, speech pathologists are not the easiest positions to fill. And so we've got one that we do teletherapy with. We have two and a half physical therapists, or excuse me, two and a half occupational therapists. And then, we have two physical therapists that we contract to get a couple of days from, and then a physical therapy assistant that does a lot of their daily services for them. We have a visually impaired teacher, we have one teacher for the deaf or hard of hearing, two adapted PE teachers, one for elementary and one for secondary. And then, we contract with Kansas State School for the blind for our orientation and mobility specialists. And then liberal school district has an audiologist that they're, they have on contract, and we contract with them to get 40, 40 days from, from their audiologist, and she comes up and does her experiments for our kiddos every year. So the support staff, like I said, I'm the director, Tracy is our secondary coordinator, Tammy does elementary, and Melanie does early childhood. Tracy Percival and Robin Lightfoot are in our office, and they take care of most of our needs. Rosa is our receptionist and interpreter. And then Wanda Doherty does a lot of our assistive technology, so she is in charge of the inventory and checking out and making sure that the teachers have all the materials and resources that they need for, for their kiddos, based on what their IEPs is recommending. And then Breckin Shup-Tremplin is our, she works for us part-time, and she's our IEP reviewer. More staff that we have, we have two psych paraprofessionals, then those ladies do a ton. They help organize all of our initial IEP staffings, they, whenever we have kids that transfer in, they get all of our IEP records for those kiddos and collect all that information. And we have five sign language interpreters for our kiddos, we have one occupational therapist assistant, one physical therapy assistant, and then we have six speech therapy paraprofessionals that work in our speech pathologists. Right now, in our district, we have 202 paras. 95 of those paras are in our more intensive classrooms, so they're going to work in like our self-contained settings, our functional classrooms, or our one-on-one classrooms. A lot of the requests that we get from, from schools, we're seeing a lot, a lot of support for behavior. We're just seeing a lot of different behaviors, whether that be for mental health issues, it could be from, depending on what their disability is. And so, Lindy Stokes is our behavior consultant, and she goes about 100 miles an hour all the time, and so she's definitely busy. And our psychs do a great job of, of trying to help with that as well. And then also, as we need new or additional positions, whether that be classified with paras or certified positions like, like I requested for the day school earlier this year. So this was interesting, as we were putting this together, Glenda actually gave me her, her presentation that she did to the board a couple of years ago. And I was kind of looking at that, and some trend data from December of 2017, when she put her numbers together to where we are now, we're actually up about 205 IEPs from where we were two years ago. So like at the high school, you can see we're up, we have an increase of 12, the Alternative Center is down one, the middle school has increased 23, the intermediate centers have increased 20, the elementary schools have increased 125 students in two years. And then Garfield has got up 15, and I think we're going to see with the numbers that Melanie's seeing right now, I think we're going to see a huge spike in enrollment on, for students on IEPs at Garfield this year. I think it's gonna, gonna be a lot more than, than what we've seen in the past. Our, our homebound kiddos have gone down a little bit, the Catholic schools have increased by seven, JDC, like I said, that's, that's a pretty fluid number, but at the, at the time we did it, it was up by one. And then, of course, our coffee shop is a brand-new program, so we don't have any data for that.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Just a more thorough evaluation and identification, it's accounting for these increases.
So what I think, at the elementary level especially, three years ago, we had eight kids in the entire school district at the elementary level that were identified as gifted. But that number is. Seventy?
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight now. And so, we got a notice, was it three years ago, Glenda? That we were under identifying our kiddos for gifted. And so, we've really tried hard to look at data and try to, try to find those kids and identify those kids. And through that process, the gifted program has grown significantly. But I also do think, and I don't have the data to support this yet, we've been kind of digging, Tammy and I have been working on this for quite a while to find this, but I think we're seeing, I think we're getting better at recognizing kiddos when they need, when they need that extra support. But I also think we're seeing kids come to us with a lot more significant needs than we have in the past. And so, I think a lot of the kids that we're seeing would not be your typical like learning disability. I mean, there are the more significant cognitive delays, we're seeing a lot more kids with autism, a lot of different disabilities that are more significant. And like I said, I don't have hard numbers to share with you, but I'm working on that. And I think there's, that we're seeing, we're seeing that. I definitely think we're seeing a trend.
Could you talk a little bit about what qualifies a student to have an IEP?
So, yeah, sure. So to be in special education, you have to answer two questions. So, you know, obviously, depending on the situation, parents can make a referral, they can request a referral, the school can, can, can request a referral too. And then after we do that evaluation, there's a, there's a cognitive assessment where they, they basically do, do an IQ inventory on the kiddo, they'll do some academic testing. And then depending on what their disabilities need, there may be a need to, to do some speech testing for speech, occupational therapy, physical therapy. And so when that's all done, they look at all that data, and then there's two questions that you ask. The first question is, does the student have a disability? If the answer is no, then, then they don't qualify. If the answer is yes, then you move on to the second question, and that is, is there a need for special education? A lot of our kiddos, just because they have a disability, doesn't necessarily mean that they need special education. So it really depends on, on what their needs are. And, and through that, through that process, we identify it. And then, based on, based on the data that we've collected and the information that we have, then we create that IEP based on the individual student needs. That answer your question?
Thank you.
Matt, here, I've got a question.
Okay.
Josh, I think you provided that explanation with the two questions, but somewhere in there is a question about gifted, and how does that work?
So gifted, gifted kind of works the same way, but it, instead of seeing that they're performing below their peers, they need to be performing above their peers. And so, based on their IQ scores and their, their classroom work and those things, are they performing at a level that is so high that general interventions in the classroom is not supporting their needs? And so, additional instruction is needed to, to give them what their academic needs are.
And is there a rubric or a standard for that, Josh? And is there a rubric or a standard for that, Josh?
What is it ninety-five percent Tracy? Ron?
I would love to speak on that.
Absolutely. Mr. Whiten is actually here. Mr. Root, so I'm going to let him since he's a gifted teacher, I'm going to let him answer that.
Essentially, you're looking for the same you're looking for the same thing that you would see on the other side. You're looking for two standard deviations above the average whereas usually on the other side, you're looking for two standard deviations below. State of Kansas, they want them they want them to be in the ninety-seventh percentile in IQ data, ninety-fifth percentile in education but there's a little caveat that says or capable of. Many of you that know or experienced with gifted know that quite often gifted kids are underachieving so sometimes you have to think about that that or capable of statement that comes in the placement criteria. Thank you.
Thank you.
That helps, thank you.
Other questions?
Can I ask just kind of off kind of off topic? So Mr. Diven, I remember a speech that you gave a few years ago at the Crystal Apple Board so how much is your glitter budget increase since adding this Garrison to your staff?
It's it's quite considerable because like now she buys glitter pins for everybody and when she goes to Garfield, it has to be happy and cheering so it's not just her room, it's everybody's room at Garfield now so.
I have another question.
Sure.
It's a minor one but the day school, what did we use before the day school or is that just one of those adjustments as we go along depending on district student demand?
I don't think we really had anything before. I think Room one hundred was there one time.
That was the starting point. Two years ago, we started seeing an upswing in students with significantly behavioral challenges, cognitive delays with behavioral challenges and we were able to address those needs pretty much one student at a time because we didn't have as many. A couple of years ago, we did try Room one hundred. Some of you that were on the board know that we asked for a position but then those students moved on and we were able to kind of close down that program and now it's kind of back with greater need.
Okay, thank you Glenda.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For your presentation.
Madam President, if I may, while Glenda's getting things ready to go, I think in the past, my boys Boy Scout troop one oh eight has come and sat through or endured one of these board meetings to complete a task and an Eagle required merit badge, citizenship in the community and I believe we have one, I can't see behind the nail so there may be two, Boy Scouts here who are I'm assuming are working on that merit badge and we could recognize them for their efforts in getting that. It's a really tough task.
Great. Would you like to come up and shake our hands? We'd like to shake their hands, not us. Come on up. Would you like a pin to go with your little souvenir from your from your. Good luck, good luck. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you for indulging me on that. Okay, with that, we'll move on to Glenda's social and emotional.
All right, so this is one of the state board outcomes and we report on this once a year to the board, what progress we've made, what we're looking at it. I decided, you know, last time I had a piano player, this time I went with a snow scene so it seemed to kind of fit but I'm not sure why. Just kind of there. So what KSD has given us is a framework to work from. This is the framework, character development, social skills and personal skills. So they all kind of interconnected with each other and those are those skills, some of them are soft skills or essential skills depending on what you call them. Some of them are things that we consider not so soft skills and more essential as far as academics and what we need to do, problem solving. That covers all curricular areas. It covers just that life, life happens, kinds of things that Mr. Felbus was talking about. This looks like it's kind of hard to see but KSD expects individual school systems to measure social, emotional learning. That is what Josh was talking about. His committee decided that we would look at discipline data, SABR's and the communities that care survey with counselor referrals as well. So what I'm going to do tonight is kind of walk you through some of the high points of the data that we've been looking at and what we're kind of doing with with that data. So we'll start with our counselor referrals. These referrals are for students that are engaged in self-harm behavior and our counselors are referring them to a mental health agency for screening. As you can see, from last year to this year, the numbers are down from the ninety-seven first semester to fifty-three this first semester. However, when I talk to the counselors, what they're telling me is, we thought a student was absolutely fine and a parent called and said, my student's in the hospital, they'll be out the next three weeks and so we're missing kids. They feel like they're doing a pretty good job but what this model requires is for students to come in and say, I'm really depressed and I'm thinking about committing suicide or something along that line. At our SEL advisory committee, Compass reported at the last meeting, that first semester, they screened a hundred and sixty-four students, individuals that were under the age of seventeen. So you can see the difference between what they screened as just one agency and what we're referring. In our communities that care data, this is the same area. So the question on the survey was during the past twelve months, did you ever feel so sad or hopeless almost every day for two weeks or more in a row that you stopped doing some of your usual activities? So the communities that care looks at sixth grade, eighth grade, tenth grade and twelfth grade. This is an anonymous survey that they give and then they send us the data afterwards. Usually it's done in the spring semester and we get the results in the fall. Where I have the red highlighted, that is where we are significantly above the state and last year's data. So in each of these, where we're talking about depression, depressed feelings, each grade except for eighth is showing an increase in in those feelings. In our discipline data, we looked at marijuana, alcohol and tobacco referrals. I have last year's first semester, second semester and then this year's first semester. Last year, if you remember, you changed the board policy and did an update on the tobacco policy and we did a full-out educating students, educating parents and we got the word out there after the sixty tobacco referrals first semester. That helped. We dropped it down to seventeen second semester but now you can see again, this year we're on the upswing again. We're also seeing some alcohol and the marijuana usage is holding up, is holding steady there, about the same. So we're thinking.
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt but on this slide where you have the district is at thirty-seven point eight and Kansas at thirty-one point six, prior slide I think it is. I just want to understand the decimal point. Like for instance, grade six, you've got twenty-nine point eight, district's at thirty-nine point nine. Are those individuals?
That's the average of the responders. So they do have average.
The average.
Based on how they answer.
I'm sorry, the average.
Percent, yes, the percent. Uh huh. Yeah, that's the percent.
I mean, average, average respondents, I'm sorry.
No, the percentage of the respondents that answered that. So they have to rate it on a on a like a one to five if I remember correctly.
Okay, then it works out in decimal. Okay, thank you. I understand that now.
Yeah. Yeah. Also in the communities that care survey, piggybacking on the last slide with the alcohol, this is reported, students reported use of alcohol in the past thirty days. So again, you can see from previous years, from two thousand fourteen to the to last year, the one that is, I think probably the most noticeable is the tenth grade and the twelfth grade and the spike there the last two years for alcohol for tenth grade. This is e-cigarette usage and again, you can see the spike for our high school age students is way up last year over the previous years. So next steps and what are we doing with that? We do have the SEL advisory committee that I mentioned that is meeting monthly. They have recommended the program Too Good for Drugs for the high school level. We already have it K eight and so that's started this semester at the high school. You just approved a tier one curriculum for us to use next year with all students K twelve. We have you also approved tonight to stop a self-reporting app that we hope that we can catch those kids sooner and maybe they'll report anonymously activities that are going on and we can get to them rather than just having to go to the counselor because many of them are saying, I don't want to go talk to a counselor. This might help us locate them and find them sooner. We also added parent university this year on our website with resources for parents and you think we need to work on getting some of that information out and maybe advertising it a little more, letting parents know that it exists. We are going to be working with Louisville, Phineet County to do an in-person parent university so where the families can come in and and we'll have sessions for them. So that's going to happen this this spring. Many of our schools have implemented peace corners, zones of regulation, CHAMP's. We have the resist group at the high school but the bottom line comes down to, we just have to find ways to continue to educate our families, the students, the parents. We found that the education did help last year but then we did a quick backslide right away when we stopped that constant barrage of information, if you will, trying to figure out what we need to to do to help but I do think education is key. Any questions?
On those last slides, Glenda, that were the alcohol use and the others ones, how how are we in comparison to, is the data out there for state?
Yes, it is and that should have been in your packet from the so you may know, I gave.
Was it that one?
Uh huh, yeah. So if you can go in, you can see how we compare with the state on the alcohol as well.
And I'm sure that I got that even when we were on the committee but I didn't know if we could do it tonight but it's okay.
And I do have hard copies if you want hard copies but the full report, there's there should be three communities that cares reports in there and you should have had access to all of those. I sent all of those to you so. There's a separate one for social, emotional, mental health and then there's a an overview of like the high points that they saw and then one that covers like bullying and things that the kids see at school. Do they feel safe in those kinds of things?
Any other questions for? Glenda, thank you and thank you for your time. I know you put a lot of time into this committee.
Thank you.
It is appreciated and thank you. Okay. That looks pretty good. Ready for more open discussion? Mark, do you want to start us off?
I'd be glad to although I don't really have anything pressing so I will pass. Thank you.
Me? I don't have anything to say.
February fifteenth is the Chamber of Congress's legislative coffee so if so if anyone is interested in going, I did see in one of the KSB documents this week that there, I think it's Senate Bill two ninety-four with regard to some property tax things and some requirements that we would have to have for getting notice with regard to property taxes and changes is being looked at. I haven't seen, I didn't see an update but I did have a chance to read Mark Tomlin's stuff today but I do think that's something that we need to be on the lookout for because it could create quite a burden for us and then if we don't follow through with the appropriate notification, then we would have to pay back difference in the taxes so that's a little concerning for me considering that's you know where we get all of our funding is, the property taxes. And if anyone is interested this Saturday, I know it's for new board members but it's the foundations of boardsmanship. If anyone's interested in coming, I know they like having some more experienced board members but it's going to be here at the ESC so a good way to get some extra training too if anyone's interested. I think it begins at eight and I'll be here in and out because Horace Good is hosting their first robotics tournament on Saturday so I'll be going back and forth between here and there. And though I think I mentioned before, March fifth, they're doing a school funding for school board members up in Scott City through KSB so if anyone's interested in that as well, that would be some good training close by.
Thanks. Thanks, Mark. Ted?
No, I don't have any.
Dr. Carlin, did we have or have we put out a notice about the event that's going on Saturday? It's I know I need to go to the titles and my boss is going to be glad at me too. Is the pathetic, no, I think not.
Yeah, it's a Saturday or Sunday.
I think it's Saturday.
Yeah, it's a, yeah. Suzette has advertised it.
Raising a child or raising a reader.
Yes, raising a reader, raising a reader, okay.
So it's one out and we've got it approved for professional development council points and so.
Awesome.
It's been out there.
Okay. Okay, because I don't want to get in trouble with my boss. For not bringing that up. Okay. Well, Dr. Carlin?
Just tomorrow will be our first district side council meeting for the twenty twenty years so we'll kick that process off tomorrow night. You're our first one so looking forward to getting that process underway and getting going for sure.
Did you get board members on that?
I I'm waiting to hear back from one, actually two. So one, I just kind of twisted arm tonight and and then the other one, we talked last week and I'm waiting for a phone call so hopefully we will have a board member and they may even end up tag teaming that. You know, kind of a reminder there, we appreciate Dana and Tim did that last year and probably I don't want to put words in your mouth but I might be able to lean on you, get you to do it again but but I think we really want to kind of rotate that and have people not do it two years in a row. Part of our reason for wanting to do that is to build capacity and a number of people so we ask our buildings to not appoint the same person over and over again and kind of spread that around and get a fresh set of eyes in there so we do appreciate the work but I know it is, it's time consuming. This year we actually added another meeting at the end based on the feedback approved so it was an extra hour or two on the end there to help us with that prioritization process based on some of the feedback from last year's group so. So if we run into conflicts, then I may put the word out again to board members.
Okay, thank you. Well, the next board meeting will take place Monday, February seventeenth at six p.m. and we get to go to Bocawood Jones so that can change your pace and then we now go into questions. Ready for the next meeting?
Yeah, yes, I'm on time.
Madam President, I move that we adjourn to executive session for matters relating to actions adversely or favorably affecting a person as a student, patient or resident of a public institution except that any such person shall have the right to a public hearing if requested by that person for a period of twenty minutes. I would ask that Dr. Carlin be invited in.
Do you have a second? Okay, all those members say aye. Mark?
Aye.
All those post names sign. Okay. Move into a different room. Same here. I'm happy.